Hello, everyone, and welcome to our City Council meeting. It's July fifteenth, Tuesday. Thank you so much for being here. I call this meeting to order, and if we could have the record reflect that we do have quorum. And we will proceed to agenda item number two, which is our invocation and pledge of allegiance. And we have for our invocation, Father Angel or Angel Montana, Montana, I'm so sorry, from Saint Joseph's. So be with, welcome, Father.
Heavenly Father, you are a beautiful, kind and merciful and provident Father who care for all of us, the children, and we hope you help. In this City Council meeting, Alice sent us the wisdom, the light in the meeting today, so that all our decisions we make is for the good of the people we serve. This we ask in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord. We pray also for Mary today, who need a support, our heavenly Father, give her, to her, the comfort, the strength and consolation she need. Give to her son heavenly place where you can use your care in heaven and help her to continue her journey on life with a beautiful love and memory of his beloved son. We declare this in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord.
Amen.
Thank you. Can we go please, our God, over our heart and say the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America? And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Father.
Sorry, guys, I didn't. Moving on to agenda item number three, public comments. I don't see anything before me of anyone wishing to address the council. We'll move on to agenda item number four is presentations, four point one, presentation and discussion regarding street improvements, infrastructure improvements, park improvements, and bond issuance.
Thank you, Mayor Council. So we're going to have a presentation. We have a contract engineer, Mr. Joe Turek, he's been with us since January, helping our engineering department out. And we also have Dimitri Dvaku in charge of Public Works and Mr. Joe Sines as well in charge of streets. And we'll have a presentation about our street improvement plans. This is something that we brought up in January. Of course, we've been working on this since last summer, trying to come up with the streets, a plan, and how to finance the street improvements that we need to do. There's a lot of work that needs to be done. As we've gone through this plan, we realized the foundation of our streets, the base that we have, they're really good. And it's the top layer that needs some help. And you'll see as in the presentation that a lot of what we need is a lot of seal coating. There's not a whole lot of streets that need any complete reconstruction. They've lasted a long time, and so, but it is, it is time to get something done. And what we mentioned back in January is the past three or four years, you know, Mr. Joe Sines does the maintenance and construction. So a lot of our improvements underground, the water and sewer, we've done a lot of that the past three or four years. And that, of course, tears up the streets, so we do little patch jobs. So now we're ready to do another phase of doing something a little bit on a grander scale. Of course, the financing part will have to be a kind of bond, and our bond count, our financial advisor is here to talk about that as well after the presentation on the streets. On top of that, as we've gone through this, this idea of a bond issuance, we also talked, and it'll come up, but we talked about the idea of the public safety and public health on our park side. A little bit of paving on some places that need paving instead of the caliche and the mud that's around there, and also some canopies in bathrooms at various parks. Canopies, especially in the summer down here, it gets pretty hot and kids really can't go out to the parks and play because those playground equipment are just in the middle of the sun. So we're looking at doing a little bit towards that as well to kind of get the streets and some public health, public safety part of the parks done. We've also done some work with our city crews, and I'll give you a list of the streets we've done. Hobbs, and these are, it started with an H for some reason, Hobbs, Highland and Hickie, Scott, King, King was North King, Up Street, Finley Street, a portion of Front Street, and a portion of Kentucky. And so we've, you know, gained a lot of experience getting some of those done. As we go through this presentation, some of these, some of the street work will be done in-house. Some will be contracted out, and, but it's, it's time to get something done. So we wanted to bring this phase of, of this presentation to you guys. And if we're going to call for a bond election, there's a narrow window for that. That's going to be in August for a meeting to call the bond election. If you guys see fit to do that. So I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Turek to talk about what they've been doing for a long while. And really thank them for the work that they've done and our staff to, Des Ray's been helping a whole lot on this too, on the mapping side. And, and so there's, there's been a lot of work put into this presentation.
Thank you, Michael. Thank you, very much. Just the last few days, the city staff and also the review and actually the whole city, I can tell, majority of the city.
Pick some mic, Cody.
Oh.
No, yeah. While they're doing that, I do want to say that, so Mr. Turek was our city engineer at the City of Alice. Back, I guess he left here in nineteen ninety-five.
That's the last time I was standing here in nineteen ninety-five.
Thirty years ago, he was standing there. And so we, we brought him back in for, for a while.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. I appreciate the invite to come back and help you. Still live here, so pay taxes here and enjoy the city. And my kids grew up here, went to school here and grew up. So I'm a lifelong resident of Alice over my parents. So I know the city well, and I think what's, what helps the city here is it's a more fortunate area of the type of ground it has. Streets are older and they get a little disrepair, but they don't really fall apart. I do a lot of work in Corpus, and I also side of Corpus also. The streets over there really fall apart because of the, of the kind of fatter clay. Here's a more sandy clay. So it appears to have helped, but you know, as you know, we have to improve our, our streets. And you're also very fortunate to have a construction crew. Most of the costs that we show here are bid out costs. You had to prepare us a presentation like this or an estimate like this with bid out costs. So by using our city crews, we can hopefully do a lot more work, or at least try to do all the work that's shown here. We constantly check pricing, and a lot of times I'm amazed at the pricing costs, that sometimes the bids come in a little, a little high. So we made sure we had plenty of contingency here for all, for all, for pricing. But with that, we went and we checked all the streets, most of them, and there's rating systems. We can do an engineering report. We can hire testing labs to come and do analysis, do soul boards. But what we did for this first effort was actually use our experience and selected many of the streets that had already been selected, and we added some more streets. And what we tried to do is you'll notice when you see the, the many, we actually picked a lot of streets, most of them around, around schools, public buildings, churches. Main thoroughfares, Main Street, more heavily traveled streets, streets for, for linking the different pounds, different parts of town, Cameron, Lincoln, et cetera. Martin Luther King, those type of streets. So you'll see that these streets that we've selected, for your consideration, obviously, we'd like your input. But for your consideration, pretty well cover a lot of this as a first effort. Of course, we need to keep going. Hopefully, this will take us not too long to improve all these streets. And as we move forward, we can keep, keep moving up and, and select another areas.
Looking at, you know, all these streets that we have in front of you on pages one through four, our idea of a timeframe to get all that accomplished would be about three years. And part of that, of course, would be in-house and part contracted out.
As I said, if we could do more of it in-house, we'll extend the life of our, of our monies. Because contracted out is expensive. As I said, on the, on the, on your presentation, are you gonna, are you gonna have the presentation?
We didn't get a tie key.
We're gonna start with page five on the presentation.
Page five.
From page and then?
One page and then page six. And the serviceability rating, as I said, we mainly depended on our experience, many years of experience to select the streets. Since the, the previous personnel had already selected some of them, we kept those and we added more. And myself and Dimitri Dvaku and Joe Sines went out, like I said, we spent several hours. We spent several hours getting the, getting the, a good, a good selection. And again, we concentrated on the more publicly traveled streets, and, and then we'll do others as, as we can. We used the four options on page seven to, to price this. Again, it's their contracted bid out prices. And so we picked either as the worst streets, we're going to try to seal some of these, most of these streets, chip seal, chip seal. It's not really a, I call it microseal or slurry seal. It's all the chip seal. It's just the typical that you see text not do. But what we'll do is we'll use our city crews to go ahead of the, of the, of the seal coating operation, chip sealing operation. And we'll level them out with what's called coal mix, use motor grader and level them out, and then improve the streets that are going to be sealed. There are certain areas that are a little too gone, so those is where we'll, we will reclaim. We call it, they have a machine they call a zipper. Essentially, what it does, it scarifies and brings up four to six inches there, and you repack it. And then improve it with either a double seal or where we can, hot mix if we can afford it. We showed hot mix cost, but sometimes it get kind of expensive. We're hoping stays this cost.
And that's a method we use for our streets that we've done, ones that we've been doing in-house.
Most of the time we use chip seal. Okay. And so we show either doing chip seal or with reclamation or a two-inch hot mix coating. And, and, and the hot mix is, like I said, a little more expensive. We'll try to, we'll try to see what, what we can do with that. We do show it, Main Street, Cameron Street, certain areas, Martin Luther King, it's longer lasting. We chip sealed Rose, I think, and the chip seal will last you anywhere five to ten to fifteen years, depending on the, on the, on the amount of traffic. If you notice Rose, I think according to Michael, we, we sealed that about three, four years ago, and it already needs it again because of the heavy loading. And so we show that going to hot mix if we can afford that. That'll give us fifteen years or so of life. If we can't, we'll, we'll chip seal it. So we're, we're trying to, to again, improve this, the ripidity in the surface. And again, we, we show the, the costing there. These are average costs that we pick from. I did check a couple of pricing, pricings and contracts that become nearby Sinton and things like that that we pick. And the chip seal, I think I was low bidder, would have been low bidder. They're kind of low. So again, we show twenty, thirty-five cents a square foot. Some of them were going like fifty cents a square foot. So we'll see what we can do. But I think if we can, again, utilizing our crews, especially with the utility, with the utility side will help us on our paving side. Did it cost opinion? Again, on page eight shows over there, our past opinion. And we, we divided the city into three areas, and the reason we did that, so in some certain areas, you may be doing sealing or hot mix in another area. Our city crews may be doing utility work. And so we'll, we'll select the, the different areas to, to perform that work.
We had talked about doing phases over three years, but what happened is we, we said, let's just do areas because we may be doing area one, area two at the same time. Some contractor may be doing a portion of it, we may do a portion of another area. So it'll be kind of done all at, all at once.
Excuse me, just a quick question. What's the color key code for the map? The purple, the green, the brown, gray?
Yeah, the lavender or purple is either a single seal or a double seal. The green is where we have to reclaim. You need to come back with either a double seal, a double chip seal, or a hot mix double up. And then the other, the orange is a two-inch hot mix, three colors.
Is there, is there something written in here with that, with the key code?
Has a key code?
Oh, we didn't, we didn't put it in there, I apologize.
Yeah, I can't find it.
Yeah.
So what was the purple?
Maybe it's in here.
Yeah, yeah.
For the orange?
Orange is hot mix. Yeah. Green is reclaim. And lavender, the most you see is lavender, which is a single or double chip seal. Well, we'll, we'll provide that information for you. Again, we, we show the different areas of town. I'd like for all to review those. If you have any questions about our selections, we'd like to discuss them with you.
You can have that email to the council, the code, the legend or something, just to kind of reference.
We'll get a legend too. Again, moving on to page eighteen.
Excuse me, I'm sorry. One more thing. Which ones are the utility? What color is that?
We didn't show the utility.
We're not doing it yet.
Yeah, we, we have a listing. We, we have a listing of all the, of all the utilities we provided for you in the front. They're all listed in there. Every street is listed in the first few sheets, and it indicates where it's getting water or sewer and what lengths. So that's what, we didn't want to make the maps too busy, so we, we listed everything out for you. It tells you exactly whether it's a two course, one course reclaim, hot mix, water sewer, size of sewer. They're all listed here. It's a, you know, it's preliminary list.
I appreciate it.
It can be changed, so you can follow that. And again, anybody, any of y'all have questions, or we can certainly bring you up to date on that. The utilities we selected, of course, there's a lot of older piping, and we selected some of the worst areas. There are other areas that we're going to seal that are older piping, but if, if later on its funding becomes available. On the sewer part, we can look at the trench, what they call trenchless construction, where you burst the pipe or you line it, called plastic, plastic, placed piping. So we can do that. Hopefully, in future, we get additional funding, we can do that. And then in, in certain areas, if the water line is really bad and we might have slipped or we won't show it here, we may go ahead and replace it. There may be some areas that we seal or chip seal or double seal or, or put a better coating on top. You may get an area where you do, say, twenty, thirty blocks. You may get an area this size where you have a leak. Well, you still have twenty, thirty blocks that are good. Again, with the capabilities, our crews will repair it correctly. And then we'll recode it with either chip seal or double seal, or if it's case it was hot mix, we put hot mix back on it. Because that may happen, because we, we simply can't afford to replace all the utilities. It'd be extremely expensive. So on page nineteen, we, we estimated the cost, again, this is water and sewer, cost per linear foot varying sizes. And this is to show you what it costs if it's bid out. And you can see that the sewer especially gets pretty expensive, a hundred and eighty dollars a foot. We can buy the pipe a lot cheaper, thirty, forty dollars a foot. We also show the tap charges, what it would cost to contract out for water and sewer, fire hydrants. They're going up a size, twelve thousand, a fire hydrant lead. We'll tie them back in, we'll buy the fire hydrants. We'll double check as we go in case we're lacking in fire protection. Fire hydrants normally are three or four hundred feet. They run six hundred feet apart. So you have a three hundred foot radius for fire people to be sure to get the proper coverage of their fire. And then, you know, our guys have to do the tap services, and it will not cost anywhere near what it shows here, but it will show you the contracted out cost if we had to do. And this is what we do in other cities that don't have construction crews like y'all have. have, and this is what it pretty much costs. So y'all are very fortunate to have the capabilities y'all have. So on page 20, kinda summarize it there, and we are getting quite a bit of, added these up for the street improvements, about 30 miles of street improvements, about 100,000, 160,000 linear feet, and sewer 10,000, water 20,000 linear feet. And so we have the three areas shown, 2,006,000, the area two is 3,732,000, area three, 5, 976. Area three shows a lot higher because that's the one that has like Cameron and downtown with the hot mix. So if we drop that down back to seal code, it would be a lot less, but that's what we show it right now. Utilities are almost $3 million, as I said, that's bid out price. And so the total we have here shown for street improvements is close to 15 million. Michael said, and he'll speak to it, we wanna add some quality of life features to this bond issue, which includes parks improvements, and especially the canopy, canopies, canvas canopies, several of those in many of our parks locations, bathrooms, and also improving, you know, I've been to ballgames and my kids went there in the pony league, the little leagues. We gotta try to pave a lot of those areas instead of being parking on dirt the way they've done for forever. Pay those areas, provide, again, canopy covers and parks and to, again, the quality of life, and that'll be very helpful along with these streets. I think it'll be quite an improvement to the city. And in the locations we've shown and picked, there are areas that pretty much the whole town drives through, so they'll see an immediate benefit. Sometimes you pass a bond issue and it's sewer lines, and they're all eight feet under the ground, you never see anything, and you go, well, we just spent $6. On this, you'll see improvements pretty quickly, once the process goes through to sell and get the bond issue, hopefully it'll pass, and by the time the, all the procedures go through, it'll probably be early next year before we get started on utilities. Again, the paving probably wouldn't come to the spring when it gets warm again, because you don't really pay in the cooler weather. So you'll see, you would see some work here pretty quickly, actually, after the bond issue.
And so you see this, the total we have is here is 14,6, and those are bid out prices. If we do some of the work in-house, that number can lower, so we can either look at, and that's when we'll have, after we finish this discussion, we can have our financial advisor come up and talk about whether it would be like a $10 million bond or a $50 million bond, and then we work on scaling, you know, either down and utilizing our crews and how we're gonna do that as well. But, you know, those will be determined once we get started, as, you know, which ones we'll do ourselves, which ones we'll have to contract, and, you know, this is still a little bit preliminary, because, I mean, they've done their work looking at the streets, but then we would go back and we look at them and decide, is it a one coat, seal coated two coats, chip seal, or whether we're gonna do some reclamation on some and really look at them and drill it down and narrow it down to what it really needs to be, but it gives us a really good idea of where we are. And so they spent, you know, a lot of time driving the streets and looking at them and the condition and which ones need a good work done, so.
We do have some blow-up sheets that we gave you all, again, we'll give you a color code for the colors.
These are the same ones in that presentation, just, you know, bigger versions, you can kinda see where they are.
Again, the lavender, which is the most street you see, are the chip seal. Seal coating like you see, the highway department do. The green is the reclaim, but we'll actually cut into the four to six inch surface, combine the asphalt topping with the base in there, repack it, and then finish it off with either a two-course or hot mix if we can afford it. And then the nice one, the orangy color, is the hot mix, those are, that's the nice topping.
So the green would be used with the asphalt zipper that we have? The green one would be used with the asphalt zipper, as you're talking about the reclaim, where it uses?
Right, with that type of machine, if we contract portions of that out, they have this huge machine that you see.
Yeah, we have one.
You see, you've seen that? And we have a smaller version that does pretty good and does a lot cheaper, where it mills and combines the surface and the base, and it actually helps the base. We'll also might look at some additives, there's polymers, we can just cut back asphalt to help improve the base, so we've got other things we wanna look at where it's worse. So we've got some other ideas also, to try to prolong all of this, it's so expensive, you know, you wanna get as many years as you can out of this stuff.
And some of those, we may do the first part where we're zipping the road, compacting to getting ready to go and have somebody else come in and do the layer on top.
Okay.
You know, work that way.
To try to get more production, because our same guys that are doing that, or our guys are gonna be doing all the utilities, that's a lot of work.
It is.
And, you know, tying the lines back in, tying in interconnected mains, tying in fire hydrants, it's a lot of work.
I know these streets are pretty much like main streets that, you know, like you said, there's a lot of traffic on, but when are we gonna come back and do those little residential ones that are really bad, that are not listed on here?
Well, I mean, we've been doing a few of them as we go. Joe, I mean, we'll do some seal coating on some, but we have a few in here as well on the residential, they're just, they're not traveled as much, so they're not in as, the condition why is not as some of these heavily traveled streets, but, you know, we do have residential hill, Palo Blanco, we do have another portion of Hobbs, Cobblestone. And yeah, there's a whole lot, a whole lot more street.
Yeah, I know, I know, it's just that, I know we can't do it all in one.
Again, by doing, our guys doing a lot of the utilities, it'll help expand and provide more funding to do more streets, more streets, like you say.
Like what you mentioned, I do like your idea of what you said that you would like to propose, and with Mr. Esparta about to counsel that the heavily traveled areas.
That's what we concentrate on, certainly, we're always.
And then some of the other ones.
Like I said, we live here, we work here, so we know where they all are.
We currently have a curb project right now, right, Michael? And we have a list that we're working on?
Yeah, that's where.
No, no, no.
On this?
I thought it was a different one.
Oh, for Safe Road to School?
Yeah, the Safe Road to School.
Oh, good, yeah, that's not street, that's sidewalks.
That's sidewalks.
That's sidewalks.
There was another one we're working on, that we had a big old list for, that we've been working on.
Oh, yeah, it was Virginia Street and those other streets, right?
Well, we incorporated our street list.
Okay, you put it in here?
Yeah, this is where we started off with.
Surprise, I didn't know that, okay.
Yeah, 'cause we did hickey, and that's what he's talking about. That, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I thought that was already kind of in the background.
Yeah.
Yeah, and so if you look at what we did here, on the first, on these pages, you have the streets, area one, then they went through and drove and added some more streets.
Got it.
Cobblestone and Centio over here, Lourdes Street, and same thing on page two, you'll see the streets that were originally proposed, and then we added actually some more, Palo Blanco and another hill, and on area three as well, we added another, several streets on area three as they drove in. We looked at Kennedy as well, there's a lot of traffic from the school buses on Kennedy, and so that gets a lot of extra wear.
So you're blending in kinda proactive and reactive, pretty much?
Yeah.
Yes.
Good.
Is there a plan for the, once you remove, on the total seal, when you do the two-inch, and you remove that asphalt, is there a plan to use that elsewhere?
We're not removing the asphalt.
Oh, you're not?
It'll be blended into the base to give it more strength, and that's a great way of doing those streets with this reclaim.
Yeah, that's.
The existing base.
So you have a, so let me just, so I can get this clear, so we have a two-inch or one-inch, the chip, right?
Chip seal.
Chip seal. So that one just, you basically just put rocks right over, right?
Right, but before we do that, we will prepare the surface of rougher areas, we will apply hot, I'm sorry, coal mix.
Yeah, kind of level out.
Level them all out. We just recently did that on Easterling, as you go around the Palm Mobile Park, they all drive there. It was real rough on the interior lane, and our crews just smoothed that out and really helped a lot, and then put a chip seal over that. That's something very similar that we'll do, so we will improve it.
And then you have the second plan, or the second, you know, that needs more work, what would that entail?
So we have the chip seal, single and double, and then the reclaim, and then the other areas where really heavily traveled, the downtown area, Cameron, parts that use the hot mix, if we can afford it, if not.
Put it right over the existing road.
Right, but first you gotta prep it. On the edges, we may have to do some milling, because if it's two-inch and you're next, say we do it in downtown, say we came and put two inches of hot mix right against the edge, you have a bump. So we'll have to mill down, prep it, and then level up, and then do, so, and then, of course, we'll fix any ruts or any bad areas, prep it, sweep it, get it ready. They'll do a fog seal for tack coat, and I'm kinda getting into the weeds, but that's how they'll do it.
Okay. Okay. That's all I got.
Yeah, no, we always incorporate the asphalt back in there to give it, to give it a base strength.
Well, I have one more. So the other thing is that I'd like to get more of an understanding of what methods were used to decide what streets are being, I mean, it's clearly obvious, some of them you can see right off the bat. The other one is like heavy traffic, but I'd like to see that procedure, you know, is it a point system, is it just a, I think this place needs it 'cause it's heavily traveled? I think that that's something that I'd like to share with the community, so they could see like what we use, what methods we use, to be able to determine these things.
Okay.
You know, so that way, you know, if there's a case or somebody feels in a neighborhood that says, well, our street kinda meets this situation, when I being met, I'd like for the community to come out and be able to say like, hey, can you at least consider ours, it kinda meets the same road as maybe four streets down? So those, I know that's, this can become very, very good, or it can become very controversial, and you understand that. But I like to be able to get ahead of it and be able to explain.
Yeah.
And that way our public knows what they're buying and how they're buying them.
Some of those original streets, they were picked through a pavement rating system, and then we went from there, and we went through our own experience, and it's very similar, went through that more highly.
I kinda know how they were done, we think we all do, but I think just for the sake of like transparency, people seeing it, I think it's very important that we show that, you know, and if we could have some literature information, I think that would be very helpful to us.
Yes, sir.
Just to kinda give everybody a fair shot.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
I just had a quick question on the parks, the canopies, so there's no proposal on that yet, or estimation of what we're doing, we're still working on that?
We're still working on that, we're just, you know, looking at one and a half to kind of two million to do the restrooms and the canopies and part of the paving as well. And did we include some of the pictures of what they would be up here?
Yeah.
Yeah, the canopies, there's pictures of canopies.
Yeah.
What's the longevity of this, lifespan?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Versus like a, just a metal kind of roof?
Yeah, we don't have that, we just started looking into this here. We were focusing all on the street part of it.
No, it's okay. I didn't wanna ask you, I was gonna save it, but I'm like, hey, well, it's not in here, and it's here, so that's fine.
Maybe we can get two options, maybe we can look at options.
Well, you look at the lifetime maintenance or something, I don't know what they are, I see them everywhere, they look really nice and really kind of appealing, but.
And then they don't.
But then we gotta fix them, so.
Yeah, the maintain, replace or.
Thank you, Mr. Trejo, I appreciate that presentation, sir.
Yes, we'll get additional information.
Questions, Mr. Phil?
No, but I do agree what Mr. Beltran said, you know, that's what's my initial concern is being transparent with our community on why we're picking these streets, and, you know, it's obvious, I mean, the heavy traffic has to be fixed regardless, you know, but our neighborhoods too, you know, the taxpayers, you know, and businesses, some businesses, you know, that, like for instance, there were, what's it called, Energy and Fesco Avenue, I mean, that is a horrible street, is that included in here?
Yeah, there's several streets up there.
Okay, 'cause I, you know, the industry one too, you know, that they, I just wanna make sure they're included, and I'm gonna take my time and really research this, I'm sorry, but I will, and look at these streets, and I hope if I have suggestions that our council kind of think about them as well.
Yeah, and we do have some, we had some rating systems in there, but we took them out just for the brevity of the presentation, we had some in there, pavement rating system. It's kinda subjective, but, you know, that's what was used. There are other more exotic systems, electronic, that are used, are more expensive, they can come in and do your whole town, and I don't know, it's kinda a little pricey, but they can give you a whole.
We don't need that.
They can give you a whole system.
We ourselves, as elected officials, are out there in the community, and they reach out to us, you know, and so we pretty much know which streets.
This is the first step, right? Finding what we're here is to put it on a bond election and see if this is what the citizens want, you know, this is the way it is, we never hurt anybody.
Yeah.
All right, John?
It's just as long as we're transparent, like you said, in how we're doing things, that's the important thing.
Sure.
I appreciate you.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
And Michael, and the whole team.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Garza?
Thank you.
Mr. Garza, sir?
One more.
We have another council member.
Hi there. It's all right, it's all right, it's one of those days for me too.
I'm sorry.
No, thank you for all the work you've put into all of this stuff, this has been work that has been long overdue, hopefully this'll be showing the taxpayers that we're not being more proactive. I wish it didn't have to go to a bond issue, you know, what it is is what it is, and keep in mind that we have equipment, the mixer and all that, so wherever we can to save every dollar that we can stretch everything.
Yeah, absolutely.
And transparency all the way.
Our best option is that our city crews did everything.
If only, right?
Do the whole, that's where we really save money, really spend this thing, but it'd be tough.
Well, we appreciate you all very much for your work.
Yes, sir.
Let's see what the people say.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trejo, appreciate you, sir.
Thank you.
Glad to have you aboard.
Don Gonzalez with Estrada Nohosa, talked about on the financing side.
Mayor and council members, for the record, Don Gonzalez with Estrada Nohosa, also with me is Matt Luhon with our firm, who's not present, but who has been very much involved, has been Jay Juades with McCall, Parker, St. Horton, they serve as bond counsel. If you go to page one, you'll see the firms there that are represented and been part of our process. You've heard from, you know, engineering and construction side of this, we're not picking the streets or determining how much they're gonna cost, or that's way out of our scope. We're pretty much gonna be limited to taking the numbers that we receive from them, and then basically looking at what it would cost from a financing perspective, and then also looking at what we need to do in terms of calling the bond election. That's probably more on the bond counsel side. We did have a conference call yesterday with the city manager, and we had your finance department staff also on the call, as well as Mr. Trejo, and that way everyone kinda understands, you know, what the timing is gonna look like. Just from a general perspective, just so that you know, under state law, a bond election can be called two times a year, they're basically in November and in May. And there currently is the ability to call those in a particular window, so for the November election, that window would fall between August the 6th and August the 18th. So that's the window in which the city could actually call the bond election. From what we understand, you don't have a regular city council meeting during that timeframe, so you're probably gonna be looking at a special meeting in order to get that done. We'll obviously leave that up to you as to when to schedule that, but just kinda wanted to cover those general dates, and I don't know if, Mr. Esparta, if there's anything more that you wanted to cover with respect to timing, just kinda wanted to, you know, give you those kind of boundaries, if you will, in terms of what you'd be looking at in terms of dates. in terms of dates. So, moving on to, to page two, what we thought we'd do is start out by giving you just an overview of the outstanding debt that the city currently has. So the, the top left, you'll see a table there that says general obligation debt outstanding. This lists from the Series 2022As all the way down to the Series 2009. Most of these are certificates of obligation that have been issued. There's a public property finance contractual obligation in 2020, and then some geo-refunding bonds in 2017, 2016A and 16B. You can see in column B, the amount that's currently outstanding, column C is the amount that will be callable on the dates shown in column D. So what we're going to be focusing on is a combination of all of this debt, because this includes debt that is partially self-supporting or completely self-supporting, which is what you see in column G, which represents, if it's 100% self-supporting, then it's being paid probably by water and sewer utility, or it's being paid by the solid waste. And so you can see what portion of that is being paid from self-supporting. That which is not is being paid by the interest and sinking, or what we call INS tax rate. So that interest and sinking fund generates a dollar amount within the tax rate that you set each year when you adopt your budget and you set your tax rate. And so that INS tax rate, plus the amount that's going to be paid from water and sewer or solid waste, will pay all the debt service associated with all of this debt. On the top right-hand side, you can see the underlying credit rating from Standard and Poor's at a single A, and then you can see the taxable assessed value, says TAV, right below that, that's in millions of dollars. You can see how the, the growth in terms of value of the city has grown from 782 million in 2021 to 925 million in 2025. Those are based on certified values, and then what the historical tax rate is right below that, again, on this far right side, and you can see the M and O, which is maintenance and operations, that's generally your, your general fund. So think of that as another part of your, your budget that really covers police, fire, public works, those types of things. You can see how the tax rate in 2021 was just under 53 cents, and in 2025, you're a little over 56 and a half cents. The graph at the bottom of the page shows principal and interest, and you can see how it's pretty level from 2025 to about 2029, and then 2030, you see a big drop down, and so that's where you have, you know, capacity for new debt service. So if you were to be looking to, you know, go to the voters, call the bond election, you may have some capacity in those years, and then you see another drop in 2032, and then another one in 2037, 2040, and then 2043. Any questions on this page? Then, moving on to page three, here is what you have in terms of your general obligation debt, that's purely tax-supported by the INS tax rate. So there's basically four pieces of, of debt, four series of obligations. The main thing I want to do here is show you that from years 2025 to 2029, that debt service again is pretty level, and then you see it drop down in 2030. So when you think about, you know, streets and those types of things that are not really related to the utility system, you're probably going to be paying for a good portion of that on this particular tax rate, and this is what the debt service looks like. So the debt service will then correlate to a particular tax rate associated with this. Any questions on, on this page? Then moving on to page four, this is now focusing, again, more narrowly, just on self-supporting debt, and most of this is being paid by water and sewer. You can see that your water and sewer utility system has mainly focusing on the graph on the bottom. You can see in 2026, that debt service is going to go down a little bit. The reason for that is, in that particular year, we're probably going to be looking at having a small portion of that debt, roughly about $70,000, that's probably going to be paid by the interest and sinking fund tax rate, because you'll need to probably do a, a small water and sewer rate increase in anticipation of the debt service that you can see in 2027 through 2029, that, that is just under a million dollars a year. So the debt service goes up. And with your utility system, it's a little bit different than what you typically experience with your INS tax rate. With your INS tax rate, you set that budget, adopt that tax rate in September, you get most of that revenue in December and January. With your utility system, you set your water and sewer rates, you might be doing that when you adopt your budget in September, but most of your revenue is probably not going to come in until May, June, July, and August, so much later in the year. But you typically have bond payments that'll come due in March and in August, so you'll need to have more revenue collected. So in order to try to get some of that revenue, get ahead of it, we're going to go ahead and try to take a little bit of pressure off of 2026, shift that to the INS tax rate, like I said, it's about 70 cents, and that'll keep your INS tax rate pretty level, so it's not going to have to go up in 2026, based on our preliminary calculations, and we'll go over that here in a minute. Any questions on this page? So what we did was, we ran a couple of scenarios, and, and the, the thought process at one time was, you know, do you look at a, a much larger bond package, and that'll be multi-year, or do you look at something smaller? And I think ultimately, what the decision was made that was shared with us was to probably look at something that's a little bit more manageable, at the same time, you can get some projects completed within a two- to three-year timeframe, and then depending upon how that goes, maybe look at doing something else, you know, two or three years later. So right now, what we're going to be focusing on is either a $10 million scenario or a $15 million scenario. So what we have, I'm going to kind of cover this page in a little bit more detail so that the next one, you, a lot of the numbers will pretty much stay the same. So in columns A through E, those numbers on, on this page will be the same on page five as well as on page six, so I'm going to cover these in a little bit more detail at first. So in column B, starting out with net taxable value, you have your certified values from the current year that we're in, fiscal year 2025, at about 912 million, 923, and going down to 2026, you don't have certified values yet, but the preliminary values from the appraisal district are at about 956 million, 370. So that's a, a number that presents roughly about 4.8% increase in the assessed value growth of the city. Column D represents the current outstanding debt, so you remember those tables that we went over just a moment ago? This is what the principal and interest looks like, so it's not the total debt, but the debt service, just the payments that are actually going to be made in that particular year. And then column E represents the self-supporting debt service, so we saw that page before, the portion of the debt that's being paid by water and sewer or solid waste, so this is the amount of actual payments associated with that debt that's outstanding. And column F, G, and H, this was now going to be the new principal and interest that would be associated with the $10 million. We took a conservative approach, assumed a, a higher interest rate instead of lower, and I know probably people are thinking right now, well, shouldn't the Fed be lowering rates, you know, sometime, you know, late this year, maybe early next year? So you're, you're saying that rates are going to go up? We're not saying that, we're just actually doing this to be a little conservative. So we have a 5.39% interest rate associated with this debt. It is going out 30 years, so it's a 30-year term, and, and it's for the 10 million. What we've done, if you jump over to column J, and you look at the calculated INS, that's the INS tax rate, you can see that for 2025, what the city adopted was .22887, it's in bold black print there. The, what we're trying to do is trying to keep that fairly level for 2026. Right now, we're estimating right around the same 22 cents, so really not much of a change there. And then we'll schedule the first payment, if you, if you were to issue these bonds, let's say, next spring of 2026, the first payment would probably come due in 2027. So what we would have is the tax rate going up by about 6 and 1/2 cents for the 10 million. That's going to be interest only, and then what we're going to do is blend in principal and interest after that, and try to keep that tax rate at about 28 and 1/2 cents for a couple of years, and then starting in 2029, it goes down to about 24 and 1/2 cents. So it's going to be spiking up for a couple of years and then coming back down. My guess is that if the bond election goes well, and you want to look at coming back for another smaller bond election, or something of that, of that size, in 2027, 28 timeframe, then you could do that, and look at trying to keep that tax rate right around the same 28 cents, instead of it going down to 24 and 1/2, and then further down to 18 and 1/2 cents. So you have some capacity in those years for, for filling in additional debt and keeping the tax rate the same. So from a, what we call a tax rate management perspective, you have some flexibility, the timing of this that you're looking at makes a lot of sense, especially if, you know, interest rates go down, then what we're probably looking at, instead of maybe 6 and 1/2 cents, maybe it's just 6 cents, something like that. So just wanted to kind of give you an idea of what this $10 million scenario looks like. Any questions on this page?
What did you say, 10 million?
I'm sorry?
Did you say 10 million?
10 million, correct.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that, okay, thanks.
So scenario two, now we're going to focus on a $15 million scenario, and again, we kept all the numbers pretty much the same on columns A through E, so I'm not going to be repetitive and, and cover those. So we're going to focus right now on columns F, G, and H. In those columns, you can see we're looking at pretty much the same interest rate, 30-year term, but now looking at $15 million instead of the 10. And with this $15 million scenario, the structure stays pretty much the same, what we're trying to do, if you jump to column J, is keep the tax rate pretty much the same from 2025 to 2026 at about 22 cents, and then in 2027, would go up to about 32 and 1/2 cents. So it's about a 10 and 1/2 cent increase when we go to 15 million, as opposed to 6 and 1/2 cents on the $10 million scenario. Then what we're doing is keeping that the same for 2027 and 28, and then in 2029, you can see there's capacity, the tax rate goes down to 27 cents, and then again, in 2030, down to 22 cents. So same type of thing, come 27, 28, if you wanted to look at doing another small bond election, you could probably do that, fill in that tax rate, and pretty much keep it at about the 32 and 1/2 cents type of, of range. We do have very little growth in the assessed values. If you look at column C, when you get into 2029, we're looking at about 2%, and then 0% growth after that. So you may actually have more capacity there, but we're again, trying to be conservative and project out roughly about five years from now, you know, it's, it's a little bit of a, of a guessing game, but we wanted to at least put something in there that, that would make sense. So going back the, if we jump to the next page, just to kind of summarize, if we were looking at the two scenarios side by side, roughly for street improvements, $8 million, quality of life projects at $2 million for scenario one, total of about 10 million, 30-year term, estimated interest rate at 5.39. The current tax rate is .22887, so about 20, almost 23 cents, and we would project in 2027, that tax rate would go up to about 28 and 1/2 cents. The increase would be a little over 5 and 1/2 cents on the tax rate, and the estimated impact to a home value of about $104,000 would be about $59.10, that would be for the year. Under scenario two, that's the $15 million scenario, again, these are estimates, street improvements roughly 13 million, quality of life projects, again, I think those are the ones the city manager outlined with respect to the $2 million for park canopies, bathrooms, things of that nature, gets you to the total of 15 million. The term would be 30 years also, interest rate estimated at 5.39%. And then the tax rate again, currently is at about 22, just under 23 cents. The INS tax rate projected for 2027 would be about 32 and 1/2 cents, about a 9 and 1/2 cent tax increase, and that would take the dollar impact in terms of tax dollars on a $104,000 home, just under $100 at $99.54.
Counsel, any questions, Mr. Beltran?
I like the example you used with the, with the house, that's very helpful.
Well, you can thank the city manager and your director of finance, they provided that to us and said, Don, please make sure you include this in there, so...
Yeah, it's very important. Yeah, they helped explain to our, it's how we're...
Right.
Thank you for that.
So that pretty much concludes our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions you may have.
The only suggestion I would make is if we go scenario one, instead of the 8-2, we do the 9-1, that's what I would suggest.
That's it. Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez, appreciate it.
This is fine.
The, the good news is, right now, you don't have to make any decisions that are final, things are still pretty fluid. It's when you get to that window between August the 6th and August the 18th that you pretty much have to be everything defined. There's publications that have to be put in the newspaper, the date of the election, the amount of debt that's going to be issued, what the impact on, on the taxpayer is going to be, all, all that information. And so between the bond attorneys and ourselves, we'll be able to provide all of that information that will have to be published, and we'll have a much more detailed timetable at that point, but just so that you...
So when it's, when it's published, we'll have the breakdown on the 8 million and the 2 million, what they for, what they're for, right, in the bond?
To...
It'd be a breakdown?
It, it will be to a certain degree, Councilwoman, the, the challenge is going to be how specific you want it to be.
Okay.
The, the good part is, if it's more general, then you have a little bit more flexibility in terms of these streets that you actually do. If you make it specific to certain streets, then if the bond election were to fail, then you would not be able to come back and do certificates of obligation, for example, within the next three years for any of those streets. You could do other streets, but not those. If you do a general, then you're not going to be able to do for streets of any kind anywhere for a period of three years. I think it's three years, right, Matt? So, so that's the, the kind of the, the trade-off, the, the more specific you are might help in terms of getting, you know, people to go out and vote for those streets. At the same time, if it doesn't pass, then, you know...
You have three years, you have to wait.
Yeah, you have to wait, right.
The quality of life, Michael, do we have to do that on this?
No.
I mean, you know?
No, y'all can...
We can decide later? Okay. Because I mean, we can get funding for that elsewhere, you would think, maybe? I don't know. I think, for me, right now, the, the streets are, are a big priority. But thank you very much, great presentation.
Thank you.
Very thorough.
Appreciate it.
Oh, wait, we got one more.
We've got a trend going on.
It's because you came in late.
It's deserved, I believe.
She says, "Thank you," and it's like, we're done.
Absolute flawless presentation, the numbers, everything's very easily legible. That way, if any constituents want to see this, it'd be useful. I, I agree with our mayor pro temp. I'd probably want to see scenario one more, because, I mean, we're going out for a $10 million loan. In 30 years, we're looking at 21 million payback. So that's an extra 10 million just on interest. And it's got me wondering, for $21 million, what's going to last longer, the 30 years, the roads that we're fixing or the debt?
Right.
And I don't want to put that kind of debt on our constituents. So if we can, you know, kind of using the Walmart idea, do more with less, then let's, yeah, let's try our best on that and see if we can do something about that interest rate, too, also. I know it's not set in stone. This is an example. And is there any possible scenario of getting into a debt agreement where if we pay extra on the principal, it's able to come off of the interest? Or are we fixed with just, you got to pay the interest no matter? You get what I'm saying there?
Yes, sir. The, right now, what we do anticipate is a 10-year call. So at the end of 10 years, being able to call this and refinance it at a lower interest rate, assuming rates are lower at that point in time. So that optionality is already planned for in what we're looking at doing. And you're right, the 539, if we were in the market today, we'd be below 5%. And so, you know, a lot of times, we look at, you know, what's happening in the treasury market, for example, which is, you know, United States government taxable rates. These are tax-exempt. But those are typically, you know, we see the 10-year treasury, which has been hovering around a 442 interest rate. So here, we'd probably be looking at, I would guess, if we were in the market today, probably somewhere around a 480-type interest rate, maybe 485, somewhere in that range. The good news is, the city has a strong A-rating. We can also apply for bond insurance. And with bond insurance, that'll get us to a double-A rating. That double-A rating will then get us a lower interest rate. And usually, the cost of the bond insurance is such that it more than pays for itself in terms of the interest. So we, right now, we don't have that all baked in here, so it's pretty conservative, again. But I think we'd be coming in, you know, at a pretty low interest rate.
Thank you again.
Sure.
Do you like the assumptions, being very conservative in the growth I saw? And then you even put 0%, so.
Right. Mayor, I figured with your background, you'd pick up on that quite, you know, handily. And I do think that, you know, just the way Alice has been, you know, growing and the experiences that you've been having, chances are, you're probably going to outperform that. So, you know, hopefully, that gives you a little bit more capacity in terms of the tax rate as you go forward.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Michael. Appreciate it.
That's it, Mr. Espersa? So moving on to our next agenda is the consent agenda. All consent agenda items are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a member of the governing body so requests, in which event, the item will be removed from consent agenda and voted on separately. 5.1, discuss, consider, and act upon approval of city council minutes for the June 17, 2025 city council meeting. Counsel?
May I make a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Second. And we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Agenda item number six, individual consideration. 6.1, hold a public hearing to discuss, consider, and act upon adopting an ordinance to rezone San Jose Street from industrial, commercial, to 1 to 4 family, I mean, I'm seeing 1 family district, and 11.398 acre tract described in, described as 11.33 acres in a deed, recorded in document number 493397, deed records Jimwells County, Texas, said 11.398 acre tract being out of shares 3 and 4 of the, is that Schroder partition? Okay. As shown on the map, recorded in volume 4, page 49, map records Jimwells County, Texas, said 11.398 acre tract also being out of lots 4 and 5 block, W. N. G. Collins Farms Lot, as shown on the plot, recorded in volume 1, page 72, transcribed, map records Jimwells County, Texas. Thank you. Thank you, Odie, for that.
Mayor and counsel, so this is a rezone. This is that portion of.
Do you want the open?
Yes.
Okay. It is 3:09. We open our public hearing at this time. It is 3:09 PM. Anyone wishing to speak in reference to this agenda item is welcome to step forward and speak on this agenda item. Thank you.
All ready?
Yes.
Talk about this. Thank you. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
So this, a portion of this tract came before you guys, also before moving it to industrial, I believe, on that corner of stadium in San Jose Street. Somebody was going to try to build something there, but had changed and some property sold. And we have Jim Dean Homes. I don't know if you're familiar with Jimmy Dean. He's the one that built a lot of those homes, or all those homes on the north side, right there on Banqueta.
Yeah.
Also built a lot of homes out in towards San Diego. The last development he did here was Stonegate Edition as well. So he's familiar with the area, and he's wanting to build again.
That is awesome. Yes.
And so he bought this property and wanted it rezoned to residential. And on the next item, you'll see the plat of all how the roads are roped up. But this did go to planning and zoning on July the 8th, and it passed at planning and zoning.
Thank you. Again, anyone wishing to speak in reference to this agenda item is welcome to step forward and speak in reference to this agenda item. I don't see anyone wishing to step forward to speak in reference to this. We will close our public hearing. It is 3:11 PM, and we close our public hearing. Counsel, any discussion or questions in reference to this agenda item? Mr. Benthor?
Not right now. I can't. 27 homes. Nope, didn't do it.
Mrs. Bowen?
No, thank you.
Mr. Garza?
No, ma'am. Not at all.
I think this is great, Mr. Espersa, and of the idea. I wanted to ask you just one thing. This goes later on, so that when he gets ready to, if everything goes well, to build, where you look at the flood maps and all those things, right? Okay, thank you. Counsel, if there's no further discussion or questions in reference to this agenda item, I will entertain a motion.
May I make a motion to adopt the ordinance as stated? Second.
We all second.
Who would like to second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Any opposed? Okay, motion passes. Thank you, counsel. Moving on to 6.2, discuss, consider, and act upon accepting and approving a plat being a final plat of 11.398 acre tract, described as 11.33 acres, in deed recorded in document number 493397, deed records Jimwells County, Texas, said 11.398 acre tract being out of shares 3 and 4 of the Schroder partition, as shown on the map, recorded in volume 4, page 49, map records Jimwells County, Texas, said 11.398 acre tract also being out of lots 4 and 5 block, W. N. G. Collins Farm Lots, as shown on the plot, recorded in volume 1, page 72, transcribed map records Jimwells County, Texas.
Thank you, mayor. Counsel, if you look at page 44, you'll see the plat showing the divided residential sections. The only ones are a little bit shorter than the, they're pretty deep lots. Are the first two that, where there's currently a house on. And, but this is his plan. And it went through planning and zoning as well, and they approved it on July the 8th.
Counsel, Mr. Benthor, any questions or discussion?
No, she's great. Thank you. No questions.
Mrs. Bowen?
No, thank you.
Mr. Garza?
No, ma'am. This is great.
If there's no further discussion or any questions in reference to this agenda item, I'll entertain a motion.
May I make a motion to approve the plat presented on agenda 6.2?
I'll second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, counsel. And thank you, Mr. Dean. Appreciate it. 6.3, discuss, consider, and act upon accepting and approving a replat being a replat of lots 7, 8, and 9 of the original town of Alice, recorded in volume T1, page 63, map records Jimwells County, Texas.
Okay, and mayor and counsel, this also, they've gone to planning and zoning also, and it's either tabled or denied. I don't know if CC's here, but I think with you guys, it got tabled. But Mr. Leona's trying to do is replat a portion of the property that he has to have a lot facing north, right. And I think that was a concern the first time. It did go on July 8th to planning and zoning, and it passed. And so it's still, every lot that he has, it'll be three different lots. And they all meet the 5,000 square foot minimum that we have in that area. And there are other houses that don't necessarily face the 4th and 5th streets. So planning and zoning saw fit to approve it, and it's before you guys for your approval as well. And one thing that you notice on the map that you have, I'm looking at this planning and zoning one side. I don't have the page number. Okay, page 65. It shows lot 1011, and there's a 12, should be a 12 right there. Well, those lots, this is from the original plat that they had. And so currently, those lots aren't even planted that way. And also, on the south end of that, lot 6, where it says 6, and there's a zone by it, that one is also split, with a house facing right. So if you look at the current Jimwells County map, it's different than what an old recorded plat was.
Our P and Z have this to.
They had this. Well, they had this, and then we showed them what.
Okay.
What the current Jimwells County map is.
Okay, thank you.
It's just, you know, when you look at an old plat on there, it looks a little deceiving that everything's organized just a certain way, but it changed throughout the years.
Is one of the houses a face towards Wright Street?
Right now. There's a little shed there. And that was in question. It looks like it's up against the alleyway, but it's going to get torn down. But there, they don't. But on south, there's, there are, well, I haven't seen the one on 4th, the one that's laid out, but I know that on rentals, there are some that face that way. Originally, they were scheduled to be north and south, but they did turn them over time.
I don't know.
Are these single dwellings, or?
Mr. Molina?
No, I'm good.
Mrs. Bowen?
Do you have 6.5? Mine stops at 6.4.
No, I guess I'm okay. Thank you.
Mr. Garza?
No, ma'am. I'm fine here.
Right, and if there's no further discussion or any questions in reference to this agenda item, I'll entertain a motion.
No, I still, yeah. Mayor, I make a motion to accept the rezoning as stated on the agenda.
Second.
Okay, we have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. 6.4, discuss, consider, and act upon adopting a resolution accepting TWD B, Project 62835, specifically for CID 02, and authorizing city manager to sign any documents necessary by Texas Water Development Board.
And this is similar to the resolution that came before you guys, before. This is for our groundwater project. And a requirement from Texas Water Development Board on a closeout is to have a resolution. And that's why it's before you guys.
Counsel, any questions in reference to this agenda item?
I'm good.
No. Ms. Bowen?
No.
Mr. Garza? If there's no questions or any discussion, I'll entertain a motion at this time.
May I make a motion to adopt the resolution accepting the Texas Water Development Board Project 62835 specifically for the CID 02, and authorizing city manager to sign any documents necessary by the Texas Water Development Board?
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. 6.5, here, discuss and act upon a presentation by Alice Police Chief Eden Garcia concerning staffing operations, intergovernmental cooperation, equipment usage/ procurement, and crime/ arrest/ prosecution data of the Alice Police Department.
Hello, mayor, counsel. Thank you for having me here today. Our city manager, I've earmarked an hour for my presentation, so please forgive me. Now, on a serious note, on behalf of the police department, my condolences to you and your family, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sincerely. Every day, we're out there on the streets, officers are. And they're doing their best, and they're doing a great job. So we put, and actually, I always talk about our mission and our core values on where we are and where we're going and what we do on a daily basis. So fighting crime, so if you look at second quarter stats, so we responded to 5,267 calls. Burglary habitation, we had six building, burglary of a building. We had four vehicles. We had 17. And so if you look to the numbers to your right, those are the first quarter stats. So as you can see, habitation, we stayed the same. Building, it actually went down from 11 to 4 in the second quarter, but we saw an increase on vehicles. So vehicles, it went from our first quarter from 11, it went up to 17. So we've been working on that diligently to try and make sure we bring those numbers down. Alarm calls, we had 205 as compared to the last, our first quarter, we had 144. Arrests, we made 155 arrests. First quarter, we had 192. Vehicle accidents, we had 121. This second quarter, first quarter, we had 128. Drug offenses, 38. And our first quarter, we had 35. And then aggravated assaults, first quarter, we had 10. Second quarter, we had 5. Any questions on those numbers? I'm going to share some other information with you. If there's not, I'd like you to look at this. And so I went back to some old stats that we had. So if you look this, I did this presentation to this council three years ago, because this is in 2023, went up to 2023. If you notice, we came in in 2021, and you started to see a decrease of 55 home burglaries. 2022 went down to 54. 2023, 52. Then I went and had to do some work on 2024. So I noticed that in 2024, we had 53 home burglaries. So that's somebody breaking into your home, right? So that went up one, from 52 to 53. However, if you look at the trend and where we're at now and where we're going, if you look at habitation, that's 12. So by the end of this year, if the trend continues, we will have 24 home burglaries at the end of the year. So the officers have been doing a great job, even though these numbers are low, and they continue to low, but I think we can always get them even lower. So those are the numbers that we're looking at for burglary habitation at 24. Burglary of a building, I don't have the burglary, I'll get, let's go to burglary of a vehicle, 123. And if you look at it, it started off at 271. And then, as you. And then as you see through the years, the numbers go down in twenty nineteen, twenty-twenty, it went up a little, then at twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, it went down, and look at twenty twenty-three, seventy-four. However, in twenty twenty-four, it went up to a hundred and ten. So we started, we focused on curbing the crime on, on vehicles, doing our best, sending out messages to people and to our community. So if you look here on vehicles, you have what, twenty-eight burglaries on a trend, right? So if we look at it at the end of the year, we're looking at possibly fifty-six. So if you think about this, last year, we had a hundred and ten. We focused our attention to the crime and on vehicles and focused a little bit more, so we should be looking at about fifty-six if the trend continues. That's a great number for our, our department. And, and then last but not least, we have our grants that we've been working on, as you know, and we just started putting it out. The nineteenth of July, we'll start Operation Step, and we'll be focusing on speeding, DWI, failure to use seat belts, and child safety, use of cell phones, and violations and other violations that within the laws of the state of Texas. We'll start that July the nineteenth. That is from Tech dot. So they've given us money, and we've qualified for money, I think it was right about ten thousand dollars, so it'll, it's for a month. So all our overtime will come through Operation Step. That's a short one. And then we also have a year-long program or a step program that will follow after this one. So we want to see what we do. I think it's, it's great that we're, we're out there, we're going to be a little bit more diligent and, and stopping traffic, working traffic, looking for motorists that are, that are not obeying the laws and our city ordinances. So that's where we're at, and we'll be focusing on, on, on all of that. Any questions?
No, I appreciate it. Counsel, any questions? Mr. Betra? Mr. Bowen?
Appreciate you, chief, thank you.
Thank you.
And this is mainly for the main streets, right? It's not like residential?
Correct. So we'll be working more on, on Texas Boulevard, our main streets, yes ma'am. Yes ma'am. Yes ma'am. And our goal is to diminish or to bring the numbers down when it comes to accidents. We're trying to curb accidents in our community, and so that's why we have these grants and that we're trying to put forth and just make people aware that we'll be out there.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Just keep up the great work and stay safe out there. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. And so, please, I encourage you, I know sometimes you see these numbers, please come by my office, and I'll be more than glad to sit with you, and I can break it all down for you. Sometimes it's hard to see numbers, and you see and you say, is this true? Can it really be this good? It really is. And, and I, I've always told you this, I hold, I don't get, give myself credit, the credit goes to the men and women that are on the streets each and every day. They're the ones that are out there doing a great job for us, so kudos to them for all they do. And so, I really encourage you.
Yesterday, you gave me a lot of your time, and I appreciate you answering my questions.
I know you get questions, and you're going to get questions from our community, and I want you to have the answers, I want you to have the right answers. And so I encourage you, come by and, and visit with us, because we've done so much that you still don't know what we've done, what we have in our units, all the equipment that we've had through grants and so forth, and so I encourage you, please stop by. Thank you so much.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you for keeping us safe, appreciate it.
Moving on to six point six, is a presentation discussion from Alice Fire Chief Patrick Thomas regarding statistics for the second quarter calls for service. Hi, chief.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, Mayor, counsel. I'm here to talk to you about our second quarter statistics and activity. On the cover page, you have some information, just, just a little general information about what we, what happened this last quarter, what we, what we dealt with. Primarily, and right after that, you have all your, your, your statistics, all the numbers that I'm going to talk about very briefly. Again, if I go too fast, or if I, if you need to stop me to ask a question about something, you feel, feel free to, to interrupt, and I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. So this quarter was a busy, a busy quarter for us. We did see an increase in total amount of calls, when you look at the numbers in general. There was a, a increase primarily in the fireside. We did have some pretty busy months, and as you go through the reports, you'll see a little bit later that the, we had a pretty busy March, and I have it broken down by month, so you can see where, where, where the increases were at. But in, in March, we did have that storm that blew through that did kind of throw a big, a lot of, a lot of calls at us that, that day. And so that was primarily one of the main reasons for the increase in calls. But aside from the calls, and I'll go a little bit more into those numbers here, and I'm hearing a little bit, but I didn't want to highlight that we did this quarter add an additional four firefighters to our staff, and so those guys are in the process of going through their, their onboard training, and should be on shift here, hopefully in the next, probably by the end of this week is what we're shooting for. And we do have another three vacancies that we're in the process of testing for, so we'll have another, another round of testing, and hopefully we'll be able to hire another three firefighters here in the next, in this next quarter. We continue to stay busy, as you guys are aware, sure, more than sure you guys are aware of the disaster that happened up in, in Kerr County and Kerrville area, central Texas, hill country. We do have a, we were requested by the State Operations Center to, to respond, and we did. We do have a crew up there that is currently still up there, and will be up there until they're no longer needed, but they are working with a TIFMA strike team. So you guys will remember the, when we had our storm, there was, there was fire trucks from all over the state that were already here and kind of in place, and they responded, and it helped us with our situation. Well, ours, basically, we're returning the favor. We're doing what they did for us, we're doing for them up there. So, and of course, at a reimbursement cost that the state helps, helps reimburse us the cost for those, for that. So in addition to that, we have continued to work through our training internally. We did start a new process, we're trying to revamp our CERT program. We're trying to find a more creative way to do it without affecting schedules of not just our staff, but residents. Some of the feedback that we got from the last round of CERT training that we did was the, having to cram so much training into a short period of time, so what we've done is we've taken and we've broken out over a longer, a week long, a couple weeks process, I believe it's nine weeks total. So we're just meeting once a week and trying to not burden somebody having to take some days off of work to be able to come to go through CERT training. So if that works out well, we'll, we'll, you know, get some feedback from the attendees of that one, and if that works out well, then we'll continue to offer that in the future. So we're, we're excited about that. We also continue to receive equipment. We've received some, here most recently, we received some new air monitoring equipment, all through grants, and we also received a new brush truck from the county that was ordered over a year ago. These things take time to, to get into, into service, but we did receive that, and we're in the process of getting that ready to go put out on the street, so we're excited about that. And then I'll go back into the numbers. Again, when you look at the numbers, we did have an increase in, in calls, and primarily on the fireside. The medical side did, did have a decrease in calls, so, but overall, we, we did increase total. And I did provide both this year's numbers and this, this year, this same time last year for comparison. The next report that I have also breaks it down by type of call, and so you guys can see the types of calls and how many of them, you'll see that the fires and the hazardous conditions, which were what primarily kept us busy during the storm that came through. You go down, I did include a breakdown of all the calls that were in the county. I know that's always been a question in the past of how often we're going out into the county, so when you look at the total numbers, there is fifty-three of those calls out of those two hundred and seventy-eight calls were in, were in the, the county. And so there's a, there is a report in there that kind of breaks that down, so you'll know what we're doing out there, how many calls we go to. Then I, I give you another report that breaks down the different zones in our cities, so we have our city broken down into, into zones, and so you can kind of see how many calls are happening in each one of those neighborhoods. Then the next report overall will break that down a little bit further, and you can see, you can actually see what, in a specific neighborhood, the types of calls that are happening in that neighborhood. There isn't anything that stands out that's not just normal, types of calls that stand out that we should be concerned with, but when you go look at the total of this monthly report, you, you do see, we're slowly decreasing the amount of calls that we're getting, so if we stay on track, we should hopefully be less than what we were last year on total calls for service, and that's the goal, is to try to have the, the less calls, you know, for, for our citizens. So we did, out of the six months for this year so far, four of those months have been busier than last year's at this same time, so we're hoping that we'll continue that slowly decreasing numbers when compared to what we had last year. And so I did include last year's numbers on a monthly breakdown as well, so you can compare them. Then after that, I finally, let's look at the, the yearly counts, and if you'll look, right now, we're at just under six hundred calls for the year. Last year, we were at a thousand forty-three, so if we can continue to keep the call volume low over the next six months, we should be able to stay underneath that, so that would be the goal. Any questions?
Mrs. Bowen? I just have one.
Sure.
Where does it show me, what page does it show how many calls are with EMS? Like if the EMS is called out, I know our fire department goes out as well, right?
So what we track is the number of calls that we respond to with EMS. Not how many calls the ambulance goes to. I can get you those numbers, but I don't normally include that, but I can tell you, so on the very first sheet, it gives you a breakdown of EMS and fire, so for this, this, this quarter, we had two, two hundred and seventy-eight calls total.
First, first sheet?
It would be page three.
Page three, okay, got it.
So if you look at page three, at the very top, it's got it broken down between EMS and fire. Now again, that doesn't mean that those are EMS calls, those are EMS calls that fire assisted with.
That's what I wanted to know, where that was at.
Yeah, that's, that, that would be those right there.
I wasn't sure if that was just EMS calls.
Um, no, it actually would be, it's, it's probably, for every one time that we go, there's probably two times that they went by themselves. Their, their, their numbers are a lot higher.
Oh, okay.
And I can, I can provide those numbers too, if you want to meet me afterwards or another day, or if you want me to include that in next month's report, or next quarter's report, I can definitely do that.
We'll visit after.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Garza?
One quick question, and this is awesome, I appreciate you bringing in the, the county part here. We had passed an ordinance where there was a, a fire outside in the county, we would go after their insurance for reimbursement.
Say, say that again?
We discussed it, but I don't think we passed an ordinance.
No, but there, there is a county ordinance or a county authorization that allows us to do that.
Okay.
Not specifically for fires, but for vehicle accidents.
Okay, 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 well then you, you actually just answered my question then. Okay, all righty, that's fine, no, because I was, you've got it broken down here as to different calls and all that, and I was just wondering as to which ones are covered by insurances and county.
Yeah.
So, okay, no, you, you answered my question then. Thanks.
Yep.
Appreciate you.
Thank you so much. And thank you, you know, for our response and helping another entity.
Yes, ma'am, it's our, it's our duty, that's just, it's what we do.
Those are in our prayers, thank you.
I'm sorry, but I forgot to click through all the, the slides.
We followed. Thank you. Okay, six point seven, here status report on June twenty twenty-five month and financial statements, summary of funds, and delivery of June twenty twenty-five check registers.
Thank you, Mayor, good afternoon, Mayor, counsel, and again, our condolences as well, Mayor.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
We'll go ahead and start with our ninth month ending of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, on exhibit eight. We have our general fund revenues are nine million, seven hundred and eighty-four thousand, one eighty-nine. Our property tax budget was two million, three hundred and ninety thousand, seven hundred and seventeen, and year to date, we show two million, eight hundred and seventy-four thousand, seven twenty-four. Exhibit B, we have our MNO and INS of four million, seven hundred and forty-three thousand and twenty dollars collected. Exhibit C, we have our sales tax budget, budget versus actual, and this includes the month of May. May's collection was five hundred and forty-four thousand, eight fifty-four, basically spot on with budget. Twenty twenty-five budget is four million, three hundred and eighty-eight thousand, and we have an actual of four million, five hundred and forty-four thousand, five forty-nine. Exhibit D, we have actual twenty twenty-five versus twenty twenty-four, and we have an increase of a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight twenty-eight year to date. Exhibit E, our general fund expenditures, we have expended ten million, two hundred and sixty-six thousand, four seventy-five, or roughly about seventy-three percent of our budget. And some of those, just to top on, the departments that you're seeing over budget, it's just mainly overtime they're, we're up against, you just heard both chiefs talking about it, they're both working really hard to get reimbursed, so we're hoping to bring that number down. And our final exhibit is revenue versus expenditures for all funds. Our general fund is showing a negative four hundred and eighty-two thousand, two eighty-six thus far. Solid waste is positive sixty-six thousand, nine twenty-six. Utility fund is a three ninety-two, six ninety-eight, and the golf course is a positive eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and fifty. So, so far, so good, we're holding on for the last three months. Any questions?
Counsel, any questions? Mr. Betra?
Now the general fund's down, because it hasn't.
We're in arrears for sales tax, it doesn't take that in consideration.
Got you. I'm good.
I'm good, thank you, appreciate it.
Mrs. Bowen?
Can you repeat the golf course again?
Golf course thus far is positive eighty-nine thousand, five fifty.
Love it, thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Garza?
Do we get to play golf for free?
We took it out of the fee schedule, I was disappointed.
You wouldn't happen to know how much this quarter that the, the county took from our sales taxes?
The, the half sa, I mean, that's, right.
Yeah, we talked about that.
About a hundred and fifty, maybe? Is that two percent? About a hundred and fifty, probably is, is what, what that equated to. Generated inside the city limits.
Yeah, just that quarter alone. All righty, oh, no, thank you. Thank you later.
Thank you.
I am.
Okay, agenda item number seven, adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn, please?
May I make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
We have a first and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Meeting is adjourned. It is three forty-one.